Councilman Castle's report. You know, I've been getting a lot of inquiries about the trains over the past few months. And what I've been trying to do is, is put them together as a group. You know, as you remember Mayor, a few years ago, we met with our Senator, in her Senator's office, and she was very helpful, and we got some traction. But we really, you know, I always, I felt like it's an uphill battle because it's a federal issue, and, you know, we met with Rothman's office at the time as well. But I think that if some of the residents want to take on this, this fight, maybe where we could be helpful is that we could kind of like put them together. Maybe, maybe say that if this is, these resolutions are great and et cetera, but I don't think they're going to really have an impact if we don't have people that are a little, a little bit more annoyed, or a little bit more, you know, that's pressuring our federal elected officials. So, I don't know how you want to handle that. I don't know if we want to ask the manager. If he wants to send out something out saying if this is a concern of yours, you know, we'd like to, I don't know how to make the, the group connection.
Between the residents and the?
Between the residents and the residents.
Well, I know that Paula Regovin had a group of residents that, Paula Regovin had a rally or a protest on the bridge on Cedar Lane. Maybe we should do something as a township to put the township behind it and have a press conference saying that we, we want, we expect our federal legislatures to do something.
That's a good idea, that one, though, definitely.
So if we can organize a date to do that, and send out a press release, and tidbits, and Facebook, and however else that we can get exposure.
That's a very good idea. Yeah, and specifically encourage anyone who's concerned about this issue to please join us in our.
In our quest for this.
Quest, good.
I know Senator Weinberg had mentioned, I was at a meeting in her office with the Senate President, that the county executive was having a meeting on Sunday in Oltepan, was that?
I have to check my schedule.
Okay.
He is having a meeting with CSX.
Do you mind joining us on this? Does council have any objection to Senator Weinberg?
There was a meeting scheduled earlier under the prior county executive, and because of the change for county executives, I guess, they put it off for the new county executive. And I will tell you as soon as I get a chance to check my phone, but he is having a meeting with CSX. And as I guess Councilman Katz pointed out, this is a federal issue. They are controlled by the federal transfer, yeah, I forget what exactly the euphemism for that group of railroaders.
Federal railroaders.
I use in both its, both its definitions. A group of railroaders who run the railroad. That's a tough lobby, which is almost impossible to fight because they have their own laws and rules. But certainly the safety aspect of this needs.
Absolutely.
And what I'm hoping that the county executive will be aiming at here, too, is to get from CSX some resources for the equipment that our towns need, for the training that our towns need, that kind of thing, so that they put forth to help the taxpayers because of the situation that they're hoping to create.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, the only, the only, the two things to report, as it relates to CSX, one of the major complaints by the charter school right now is just that directly behind the charter, charter schools where the CSX trains idle. And that's also where, where, you know, their employees onboard and offboard the trains. And they're, obviously that's creating some serious concern because, you know, it's creating a bottleneck there, and they don't want to be the place that's causing a bottleneck that could increase the likelihood of some type of train incident. Lastly, just as a, as a release economic development, this flash pad, as well as the, the baseball park for T-Nex Southern, I have begun the investigation of grant opportunities for that, based on conversations I've had with Senator Weinberg's Chief of Staff, Debbie Francica. She pointed us in the right direction for those particular grants. So I've been, I've started the process for that, for grant opportunities to pay for those. It has not yet been fruitful, but it is ongoing.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, do you have any reports? And just as I mentioned already, I attended a meeting in Senator Weinberg's office with Senate President Steve Sweeney, along with the mayors of District 37. Some of the topics that we discussed that I would like the township to follow up on, in our discussions, we were discussing the fact that we have a new county executive, and we wanted to get an update on the rehabilitation of the Cedar Lane Bridge. Mr. Manager, do you know anything about a timeline of, as to when the bridge will be repaired?
Anderson River, no, at this time, I don't have it.
Can we reach out to them?
I'll reach out to them.
And get a timeline on that. Some of the other items that we discussed, of course, is taxes and ways that we can provide relief to our residents. I had a conversation with the mayor of Hackensack about the relationship that they have with Hackensack Medical Center, and the ways in which the hospital contributes to the community. We are in the process right now of setting up a, a meeting with myself and the deputy mayor, with the president of Holy Name Hospital, to see if we can, I won't say we have a bad relationship, but in the past, we had a better, more productive relationship, and we want to see how we can benefit one another. We also discussed CSX, as well as light rail in the region. It was a good discussion, and I was happy to sit with other mayors as we try to figure out ways to provide service to our residents at the least amount of cost. Economic development was also a point of discussion, and how well Inglewood, excuse me, how well the city of Inglewood is doing with their development plans and lessons that we can learn from them. I know that Councilman Castle and Son and I had a subcommittee meeting in Inglewood a couple of weeks ago, and we had an opportunity to talk to Adam, Adam Brown, who is Inglewood's, president of his Economic Development Corporation. So we've been picking his brain as to what, things that we can do in T-Nex to improve our business districts. Any other reports from council? Council listed items. The first item listed here is that I would like to see us schedule a community meeting. It's something that we've done in the past, where we've actually gone out into the community and meet with residents and have an informal discussion. And I would like to see us schedule something in the springtime after the holidays. Does any, any objections?
Good question.
Okay. I also would like to add to our annual.
Annual?
No, either Rotiscent or one of the schools.
So you're talking June?
June, no, May.
May before?
Before the summer.
Before summer, okay.
And we held our retreat in December, and I would also like to see us add that to our regular meeting schedule, the first Wednesday in December, to host an annual retreat of the council. Any objections? The next item is Councilman Schwartz.
This was a resolution that the PPRAB has asked for. It's a recommendation to establish a sportsplex advisory committee to the township manager. It's a little bit different than the PPRAB, made up of representation of all the sports leagues in, in the township and all the concerned parties, including the Board of Ed, of course, as it relates to not just, of course, the sportsplex, but the overall sportsplex in Voty Park and whatnot. So that's something that they think is a good idea, I think it's a good idea. It was something we saw a little bit weakness of when it came to T-Nex Southern's presentation. So we want to have this a full township-wide board of, of, I guess, of role players, or people involved in that, who use Voty.
Could it be a subcommittee of the PPRB, or do you think it should be?
I may want to ask Dr. Hoffman here to speak a little bit about that, if that's something you feel, do you feel, I mean, I know that Dr. Ruskas is not here yet, he may be showing up, but.
Dr. Hoffman, would you care to?
Would you? And I'd prefer to you as the resident expert on, on our athletics and township.
Identify myself.
Yes, please.
Ken Hoffman, T-Nex. I think that while it could be a subcommittee, I think it's important enough to be somewhat separate, almost as, as an ad hoc committee, just as we are starting this process. And it, while we are formalizing what it, with Mr. Browton and others had done throughout the year, throughout the fall, things have got to get started early. So generally, subcommittees have members on it that can report back to PPRAB, and I think this committee would be reporting back to Mr. Browton, to council, with also Mr. Browton and Ms. Crockett. So I think probably self-standing would make more sense than being a true subcommittee. I think it'd be members of the PPRAB on it, but I think there's members of the PPRAB that are interested in other things, so I think this would probably be something a little bit separate.
Okay.
And I know there's a TBO representative here as well, Mr. Vogel, and I think I was here with that in mind as well.
And can I just add, you know, this committee is, is a committee to advise the manager on the various concerns of constituents, you know, using the parks. I'm not against any type of committee like that, and I don't believe Glenn is, is against it as well. I think it's a committee that I could form, if it's going to be a committee to advise me, so.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that, you know, I can set it up, doesn't need official action of the council.
I would just ask that we reach out to all of the sports organizations to see if we can get representatives to serve. Embroid, yes, exactly. Okay. Township managers' report?
Okay, just a couple of items I want to give you an update on. The, the council retreat, a few action items came out of the council retreat. One of the items was holding a medical center, setting up a meeting, we're working on that. We've been going back and forth today with emails, trying to get a date set up with Mr. Maron, he's, he's willing to meet with us, just trying to nail down a date. Parking meters, I have a meeting set up for the 22nd with a parking meter company to discuss parking meters for commuter area that we discussed, Ward Plaza. Also, what came out of that meeting was to find out who the vendor, the parking meter vendor was for Inglewood. We've been in contact with them, we're trying to get a meeting set up with that vendor as well. And the contact Economic Development Authority of the state to, to set up a meeting with the subcommittee, we're trying to get that meeting set up as well. That's the end of my report on the, on the council retreat. I have some other items, council-directed items, that came out of our December 17th meeting. The meetings for appraisal systems, we set up two meetings, there was one meeting January 6th, last meeting is on the 20th. And those meetings are being held at the Rotiscent, residents can come in, get a general overview of the appraisal process, and set up appointments to discuss their individual property assessments. I've also included in my, in my budget for, for council, I'll be presenting shortly the $100,000 the council wanted allocated of most funds, for most funds for Southern baseball field, upgrades at Southern Baseball Field. A gentleman had came in at the meeting on the 17th about Fairfield Avenue and the leaves, and the leaves only being cleared on one side of the street. DPW cleared the leaves on the 19th. Potholes, we had a pothole complaint on Voorhees Street, the potholes were filled on Voorhees We also had a complaint about homeless persons using the shelter, the bus shelters on T-Nex Road, the PD has been advised of that, and we have our patrol officers checking the bus stops, bus shelters periodically. Last item I have is Five Star. Five Star wanted a location on, on Cedar Lane at a movie theater where they could stage their bus and drop off seniors at the, at the movie theater. They've been in contact with the police department. We weren't able to locate a staging area, but what we decided to do is for them to contact the police department, let the police department know when they're going to be there, we'll drop the seniors off in front of the theater. Police will deal with the traffic issues if, if necessary, because some of the seniors can't walk that far from, from Elm Street. So the police department's going to, if we make a staging area, we talked about making a staging area by the Elm Street parking lot, that's too far for some of the seniors to walk. So what we're going to do is, before they come, they'll contact the police department, police will meet them there, they'll be able to do their drop off, and then take off in the bus, and then come back later. So the police department's going to work with them to facilitate these, these trips for, for the movies. And that's the end of my report.
Councilman Sun.
Councilman Katz and I had met with Cedar Lane Management Group, and we discussed the possibility of using the, the regular bus stops, right near, on Chestnut, on the south side of the street, and on, on just west of Garrison, on the north side of the street. Those are already marked bus stops, there's a shelter there, people can sit down, you know, to coordinate perhaps the use of that as an alternate, rather than parking in front of the, of the movie theater where it would block the passage of people, and would block the lane of traffic.
Well, we spoke to the director of Five Star, and she had some concern about some of their residents walking that far. So they need to pull right up in front, you know, and we'll help them get off and, and get the bus out of there. And I think we're going to try that, you know, temporarily, to see how that works out.
Councilman Schwartz.
Sorry, I think we, the addendum agenda, there was, if I'm correct, I might, we did not go over the other items we had under council listed, I had specifically the Technology and Engineering Advisory Board. I don't think we, we, there's some packets left back there, I can go again.
I know. Thank you. Does any council members have any additional questions for the manager regarding his report?
Yes, just very quickly, what's, what's the status on the old police building? Because I know in November, we had like a, I wanted to know the status on the old police building. In November, we knew that there was going to be a two-week delay in, in turning it over, but what is the, the new turnover date for substantial completion?
We don't have a, a new turnover date yet, but we had a delay in the delivery of the carpet. So we're hoping that the balance of the carpet comes in, I believe it's supposed to come in the week of the 23rd. So somewhere around there, after they receive it in the store, the carpet, we should be pretty close to getting it turned over.
And I walked through, I, I think I know what they are, but I'm not sure, the areas of refuge, is that, is that, if you're, if like, if there's a disabled visitor?
Yeah, so, yeah, there'll be phones there, and you'll be able to contact the, the police desk. They're going to go right to the police desk, you'll be able to press that button, speak to someone at the police desk, and tell them where you are in the building.
There are also engineering standards for an area of refuge that will have a positive air pressure, so that people who cannot get down the stairs, people in wheelchairs can, can use it as a refuge until forces can get to them and be able to take them down, without, hopefully minimizing the risk of smoke getting in, into that area.
Jamie, is the addendum on the table for the public?
Okay, so these items are listed from, public, okay. We have a new business item, professional service contract for the Board of Adjustment. At the end of the year, we received a email from the Board of Adjustment, looking to retain Schwannabee Hall as their planner, I mean, their engineer, and the council had just.
I believe we rendered a legal opinion to council that the Board of Adjustment and Planning Board are autonomous bodies, and they have the right to hire their own professionals. We have nothing to say about that from a legal point of view. There are several cases which has, have ruled in that, that way, and it's our obligation to provide reasonable funding for their experts. They do not have to hire the town's professionals. That does create some problems for the town going forward, it's not a, not an ideal situation, but we really cannot block that from happening, other than by the members of the Board of Adjustment, will you pick? You have no say, you basically have no say.
And we have to fund it.
Yes, you do.
So can you just clarify to the public what's really happening here? We, we changed, if, may I ask?
Sure.
We changed, we made a change as a council to a new, new group. And I don't know what the bid was as far as the financial aspect, but now, an autonomous body went and decided to write a check to another group to cost taxpayers money, because the new group that we hired originally encompassed work from the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Board. Is that somewhat correct?
I think you've outlined what took place, Councilman.
So now the T-Nex taxpayers are paying almost twice, or, or, or paying two different companies.
You're paying two different companies, but worse than paying two different companies, you now could have conflicting engineering issues. The engineer for the Board of Adjustment deals with all engineering concerning the application, but that does not necessarily translate to when people pull permits from the Building Department, which will fall under the jurisdiction of the township engineer. And that creates the potential, not necessarily automatic, but it raises the potential of different engineering opinions on, on, on the same project.
Okay, so I, I understand what your opinion is, and that you rendered. I, I understand that, I understand what you're saying as far as that our hands are quasi-tied, but I don't accept it. And I think that this should be put into closed session, because this is potential litigation. Unless you think we can talk about it in open session. It's not the mic, it's my voice, I'm not feeling it. I'm in the mic. You know, unless, Mr. Church, you feel that we should discuss this in open session, but I, I personally think that, that this is, is detrimental to the town as you just outlined, and it's costing our taxpayers extra money, as was outlined. So I don't see how we should accept this, and I can't accept this. And I will never support a bill, I'll never pay for or support a bill of theirs knowingly.
Well, I think the, the, there's no action being asked for from the council, there's no resolution that you're being asked to, to vote on, there's no contract you're being asked to sign. The issue will come where there'll be, there ultimately could be a voucher that gets on the bills list, and the council will have to act on it at that point. As we sit here tonight, there's nothing, no action is being asked of the council, it's just an issue that I think.
The, the question is, should the council take action?
And what action? What is our recourse?
There is a recourse.
That, what type of actions, et cetera, I, it's rendered, in my legal opinion, I think that should be discussed in closed session, not open session.
I'm in favor.
So can we list that for our January 28th closed session?
Mayor, can I ask one question about that? Just erring on the assumption of positive intent, did we actually have any type of communication with the Board of Adjustment that we were making an engineering switch? I mean, did they renew this contract under the guise that we?
They never had a contract. This has never happened before.
No, I understand that, but.
My, my understanding is that the people in the Building Department was, were aware of who the township hired as the engineer, and it was my understanding that the liaisons from the Building Department to the Board of Adjustment and Planning Board advised them of the change made by the town council. That's my understanding of it, that's not firsthand knowledge.
And, and Mr. Church, just one last clarification. You used to be the attorney for the Planning Board, Board of Adjustment, had, so, in the last 15 to 20 years, have they ever had their own, separate from the town?
There might have been occasions on the given applica, on certain applications.
On a case, by case.
Where they hired a particular engineer because of a particular application at the cost and expense of the applicant.
Right, but this is the cost and expense of our taxpayers.
Potentially, yes.
Okay, so we have our direction on that. Okay, work session, communication items, we have a letter that we received from Mr. Farrar, asking us to consider the Fair Lawn ordinance for our holiday displays. If it's okay with council, I'd like to refer this item to the manager.
I fully support that.
For consideration and review, and to make a recommendation to council. I, I would just like to say, Mr. Farrar, you weren't here when, you, you came before council in December, and you left before we had an opportunity to speak. And I was deeply offended by the chasing New Jersey story that they did on the holiday display. I feel that we have a very inclusive holiday display, I understand that we don't agree on that. I think that in T-Nex, we have gone out of our ways to be inclusive of all religions, all nationalities, all backgrounds, races. And I, I, I did not appreciate seeing such a divisive piece, because that's not reflective of who or what T-Nex is. In the report, they indicated that they reached out to me, and that's absolutely not true. No one from my nine reached out to me on this item. So we will definitely take what you submitted under consideration, but it's not because I don't feel that we are inclusive and of, of all religions. I think that we do a pretty good job of, of reflecting holiday display on our municipal grain. So thank you for your information, and, and we will take it under review. Councilman Castle, you have a council listed item?
Yes. Two, actually, the, the easy one is, I spoke with Mayor Tomasco, of, I believe Alpine.
The first item is this, there is an endorsement resolution for CSX, is that what you're?
Oh, I just said earlier, and that was just the endorsing resolution from the director of the.
Oh, okay, so that's, gotcha.
Community Charter School. I'm happy it was on there twice, we didn't forget it. But the other, I'm going to skip four-way stop sign and go to resolution encouraging protection of New Jersey Palisades View Shed. Mayor Tomasco had reached out and asked if the council would consider, consider an endorsing resolution for the LG Building, for the proposed height, and that he wanted the height to be at the tree line, essentially. So the clerk was kind enough to draft a resolution.
Mayor who?
What's that?
Who did you say, mayor who?
Mayor Tomasco.
For, from Inglewood Cliffs?
From Inglewood Cliffs, thank you.
That's not Tomasco.
Oh.
Yeah.
Hold on.
Wait, who reached out?
Mayor Tomasco.
From Alpine, but Parisi is, is.
Yes, Mayor Tomasco of Alpine.
I was confused.
Mayor Tomasco of Alpine reached out and asked if we, as a, as another municipality in Burton County, would consider putting together an endorsing resolution for the LG Building to limit the height to that of the tree line. He and I had this philosophical conversation about what if the trees grow, you know, then the building can add essentially, but he said, you know, ultimately, the tree line where it is right now, because they wanted to preserve, you know, the, the view shed. So I said that at, at the first opportunity we had, I would present it. The clerk was kind enough to take the resolution that Inglewood drafted in support of it, and basically replace all of Inglewood with, with T-Nex. I think it's something I would like very much for us to, to submit an endorsing resolution. I think, you know, when it comes to preserving our view shed, and preserving our tree line and the look and feel of New Jersey, our governor has done enough to, you know, cast a bad light, I think that we can do a good job of casting a positive one by supporting, endorsing resolution. Oh, I'm sorry if you can't hear me. I said I would very much like for the municipality to do something, to put together an endorsing resolution to preserve the view shed that is in, in Inglewood Cliffs, and Fort Lee, and so on and so forth. So that's my request, it's been put together, it is listed for council consideration.
I, I just wondered if we can kill two birds and maybe invite LG to come here to T-Nex. We have a perfect place for it.
And Mercedes-Benz. Meet the height requirement, yeah? Maybe we can do that.
Add that to the line, I, I don't know.
The, the slightly more complicated issue is the four-way stop at the corner of Terhune and Elm. I understand that, you know, the Department of Transportation puts out a manual, and that manual states that there need to be a minimum number of accidents that need to occur at a, at an intersection for a four-way stop to be, to be put into place. I had a, had a conversation with Assemblyman Gordon Johnson about the extenuating circumstances of Terhune and Elm. And just for members of the public who were not aware, there have been a number of accidents that have occurred at the corner of Terhune and Elm. One of the township residents, Mr. Amato, came and spoke before the council, and, and, you know, basically said that he lives at that intersection, he has viewed three accidents to date, and he had submitted a petition to the township for consideration that we put a four-way stop there. In the time that he. In the time that he presented to the council in mid-November until now, there's been yet another traffic incident, another accident at that intersection. It was a pretty bad accident in which a car flipped over, individuals were sent to the University Medical Center. And because that intersection is actually two blocks away from the TNEC Community Charter School, it is an intersection that is heavily trafficked on foot by residents when they're dropping off their children or picking them up from the TNEC Community Charter School. It seemed that the extenuating circumstance would trump, you know, any potential, I don't know, traffic incident that may, you know, non-traffic accident issue that we couldn't follow up on. I think we, as a township, have to look at the fact that this manual was drafted, and it gives us a benchmark, but the, the manual that the Department of Transportation drafted did not necessarily have TNEC in mind. And when we recognize that there's an intersection that is heavily trafficked that is incurring a number of accidents, we, as a municipality, have the authority to put forth an ordinance to put a four-way stop there.
I'm in favor of it.
So, I would, I beg, implore, ask my council colleagues to support an ordinance that would allow for at least some measure or modicum of protection for our residents. And for those of you who don't know, you can drive essentially from Main Street or what is, you know, where the girl turns into Main, all the way to Cedar Lane without hitting a stop sign on Elm. And, you know, anyone who has driven that street in the morning knows that sometimes there is traffic on Queen Anne Road, and sometimes people use that as a through street to get from one side of town to the other. And you're only building speed. So, I'm no traffic expert, but if there is an intersection where we're having a lot of accidents, and we know that it's in a school zone for the protection of the students, for the protection of our residents, and just for the common sense measures, I think that we should put a four-way stop to hopefully mitigate any future accidents. So I ask you for your support on that ordinance.
Yeah, and I would concur on that, just very quickly. It's a, I agree, it's a very wide, long street, and encourages almost a drag racing mentality. Having a stop sign roughly at the middle of that block would help slow that down, would help some, deal with some of the cross streets being on hills, having limited sight views, and I think it would be a constructive way to deal with the accidents that already have occurred and that are likely to occur if we don't do anything.
You just added five minutes to my commute.
But it'll be, it'll be a safe commute.
Oh, I didn't know about the cut through. You just saved, you just saved my commute.
Does any council members have any objection to the, Mr. Manager, you've sent us some emails.
Yeah, this is, this is an issue that we've, you know, we've, we've had discussions about. I've discussed this with the Police Department. The Police Department conducted evaluation of the location. In New Jersey and in the township of TNEC, we use the, the federal manual, the manual on uniform traffic control devices, to determine where traffic devices should go to protect the public, and so that they're not indiscriminately placed, you know, in, in locations wherever we, you know, feel they should be. A study of that intersection revealed that there was seven accidents in six years, and that the traffic flow at that particular intersection doesn't meet the requirement of the manual for a four-way stop. Based on that, as the manager, I would not recommend that we put a four-way stop there. Also, the manual recommends that there be an engineering study as well.
Which engineer should we hire?
So, the engineer-
Let's get a third one.
The engineer, based on that, is not going to be able to, to recommend and sign off on the fact that a sign should be placed there, because a preliminary study by the police in lieu of the engineering study revealed that there's not enough traffic there for a, a four-way stop. I mean, I understand and I appreciate the, the public safety issues. What we've done there to try to improve safety is, we've added stop signs there to try to make it more visible for the public to, to see the stop signs in advance. We have stop signs on both sides of the street. We've added some reflective material to the, to the signposts, you know, so motorists can see the, the signpost better. We're also evaluating any view obstruction in the area. The police are in the process of doing it now. When weather permits, we're going to install some stop lines at the, at the intersection. But I think that each state is, is clearly required to drop the, to adopt the manual on uniform traffic control devices. The federal government requires that we adopt it, and that's, that's the rule. That, that's what we should go by, and I don't think we should deviate from that as a, as a town, because we may create some other condition there that's unintended. And, you know, motorists should know what to expect when they're driving across the country, where signs will, and devices will be placed.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, Mr. Manager, I don't expect you to ever agree with it. I think that you're absolutely right, because you're following the uniform manual. But I think that sometimes circumstances should be evaluated based on the specific area. We have, we have done this in the past in TNEC, and I understand the risks that are associated with it, both the enforcement ability of our, of our, of our Police Department, as well as any potential liability. In this specific situation, and I'll tell you, I also believe in garrison as well by Art Vasquez's house, we should consider. You know, people think Art Vasquez running a car lot, a used car lot, because he's got a car in front of his house every, every week. You know, but I think in this specific situation, that, that this is a political decision that, that council can decide to do, going against the wishes, obviously, of the manager and the Police Department. So I'm in favor of it if, if there is the support to do it.
So we have three. Councilman Schwartz.
Yeah, I mean, I would support it as well. I've, I've driven through Inglewood, and I know that there are, all over Inglewood, you know, speed bumps, traffic signs that are, that I know are in clear violation of the manual on uniform traffic control devices. I know that I might not be able to get a ticket, I might get it thrown out, but I'm, I'm stopping at those signs. I'm slowing down at those bumps. It's slowing down the, the speed of traffic, it's slowing down the flow of traffic. I, I think this is an important safety issue that I think we should be addressing as a council, as a township.
For the record, I did mean Councilman Schwartz, I wasn't confused.
I, I actually fully disagree with this entire concept, but I don't want to be the person that disagrees and there's an accident as a result. And I've been on that, I was actually with a former township manager, Helene Full, and her and I were on an ambulance on a ride along, and we actually went on a call right, right over there. So I fully disagree with everything, but I'm going to go ahead and say yes, because I don't, it is a bad corner. It's, it's, something's not heading up here.
With that said-
Mr. Manager, you have your direction. Councilman Schwartz, technology?
Yeah, I'm actually not sure why we, I thought this was done already. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, we had discussed forming a technology and, the formal term, sorry, is it Technology and Engineering Advisory Board. I, I thought we had the agreement to go ahead with that, and it's something I'd like to get started, modeled a little bit after the VOTI Park Board that was formed with a, some very good and well-qualified citizens. So, what do we need to get that going?
What is, what are you asking?
I'm asking for an advisory board of residents for technology and engineering advances that we can make in the township, whether it be suggestions to the Township Code, whether it be things in that nature that I personally am not qualified for, and I don't work for Apple, so I can defer. But it's basically similar to the reason why we reached out to this VOTI Board, and very, to take that to the same level of, of citizens that are qualified to make suggestions of how we can change or suggest changes to, to codes that technology and engineering can be applied to.
So our ministry-
Well, I mean, obviously, code's a little, a wrong word, because of state code and everything that we follow, but something along those lines, I'm trying to-
Don't we already have Alex Rashine?
So I'll nominate Alex Rashine to chair the board. I was seconding Alex Rashine.
Mayor, can I just comment? I mean, I think one of the things that I'd like to give Dr. Rashine a shout out here, I mean, he, he came before the council. He had a good idea, I think, the first couple of times, that it was difficult for, for many of us to actually grasp the idea he was proposing, and that was trying to create some mechanism that would allow you to take your boiler off of, you know, your, your house electric and plug it in. And, I mean, he championed this effort, and I think just this week, based on the conversation that we had, you know, he won this fight, and he got a letter from the state that he's going to be presenting to our Building Department about, you know, changing the standard in town, because it is a state standard. And I want to congratulate him for that. But I, you know, I don't know if he said it jokingly or seriously, but I would second, you know, Dr. Rashine to be a care of a board for-
In exchange, you'll be fine with the three minutes, so the Good and Welfare.
Okay. I have reservations, because I'm not really clear as to what your intent is. And my, my concern is, is that in the past, and I'll use the Financial Advisory Board as, as an example, we created a board that had no goal, and basically didn't produce anything. So, I need to know more of, of what the duties of this board would be, and what the goals would be before I could support it.
It's fair comment.
I'm not clear.
It's a fair, fair reservation. I, I think I can easily tackle, I'm not sure if I can easily tackle it right this second.
Maybe if you revisit it, if-
I suggest that we just table this, and then we come up with a clearer purview of what this, this advisory board would be handling, some examples of some of the things it might, it might recommend or look at. And once we have that, you know, let's start thinking about going forward. I think we, this, again, whether it's the Financial Advisory Board, which I, I think is something that we should do, I think we should have a very clear purview and a clear set of goals for what those folks who are volunteering are doing, which only minimizes the, the likelihood that we have any conflicts in goals and objectives, and we do get things done.
Okay. Township Attorney's Report. Okay. We will now have hearing and adoption on ordinances. The clerk could read the ordinances into the record.
Ordinance number 47-2014, an ordinance amending Division II roadways of Article Two, excavation and public ways of Chapter 14 excavations and soil removal of the Code of the Township of TNEC pertaining to excavations within public roadways, streets, parks, or public places and permits for public utilities. Ordinance number 48-2014, an ordinance amending Section 36-14.1 entitled All Vehicles Except Those Vehicles With A Valid Handicapped Parking Placard Or License Plate Between 10:00 AM And 12:00 Noon Except Saturdays, Sundays, And Holidays Of Division II Prohibited Parking Of Article Two Parking Of Chapter 36 Entitled Traffic Of The Code Of The Township Of TNEC To Add Both Sides Of Voorhees Street Between TNEC Road And Van Cortland Terrace. Ordinance number 49-2014, an ordinance amending Appendix Three Of Chapter Two Of The Township Code Entitled Charter Administrative Code Relating To Fees For The Salmonization Of Marriages And Civil Union Ceremonies By The Township Mayor Or Deputy Mayor When Authorized By The Mayor.
The hearing is now open on these ordinances. Ordinances. Would anyone like to address the council?
Any questions first? Was ordinance five, number 15 ready?
No, that's later in the meeting. Anyone else would like to address the council? These are ordinances only, the ordinances that were just written into the, read into the record. The hearing is now closed. Any questions from council? I'd like to move ordinance number 47, 48, and 49. One second.
Second.
Councilman Castle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
Yes, with an extension of 49 to 14.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stone?
Yes.
Mayor? Yes, with an extension of 49 to 14. Good and Welfare? Am I right? Okay. We've now reached the point in our agenda, Good and Welfare, where you have an opportunity to address the council on any item on the agenda, or any item that you wish to bring before us.
May I have to read in that one proposal?
Yes.
Okay. James, what number will it be?
It's gonna be a resolution R. Resolution R.
R. Okay. Resolution R. Whereas an allegation of age discrimination has been received claiming a violation of TNEC's personnel policies and procedures, manual is set forth in Appendix, Appendix Four of Chapter Two of the Code of the Township of TNEC with respect to the appointment to the position of Deputy Police Chief. And whereas in order to avoid any appearance of a conflict of interest, the Township Council finds it is necessary to hire the services of an independent outside hearing officer to undertake the investigation instead allegation, and to issue a written report and recommendation thereon to the Township Council. And whereas the Township of TNEC Labor Council, Genova Burns, have recommended that John J. Harper, Judge of the Superior Court, retired of council with Lauffer, Delina, Cadessini, Jensen, and Boyd LLC located at Chancery Square 23, Catana Avenue, Morristown, New Jersey, be retained to perform such investigation based on his familiarity with public employee personnel matters and experience in conducting investigations. And whereas such services constitute a professional service as defined under the Local Public Contracts Law, NJSA 48:11-1 et cetera, the total cost of which will not exceed 15% of the bid threshold of $36,000 and may be awarded without public bidding. And whereas the Township Council finds and concludes that the award of such contract to John J. Harper, Judge of the Superior Court, retired based on his familiarity with public employee personnel matters, his experience in conducting investigations respecting public employee personnel matters, and his independence and impartiality will be most advantageous to the Township of TNEC price and other factors considered. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of TNEC, Bergen County, New Jersey, that John J. Harper, Judge of the Superior Court, retired of council with Lauffer, Delina, Cadessini, Jensen, and Boyd LLC located at Chancery Square 23, Catatana Avenue, Morristown, New Jersey, is hereby awarded a professional service contract to conduct an investigation into the allegations of age discrimination claiming a violation of the Township of TNEC personnel policies and procedure, manual is set forth in Appendix Four of Chapter Two of the Code of the Township of TNEC with respect to an appointment to the position of Deputy Police Chief, and to prepare a written report thereon setting forth findings, conclusions, and recommendations thereon, and that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute such agreement of a form-proved township attorney to carry out the foregoing purposes to an hourly rate of $250, not to exceed a total contract price in excess of $5,000, and upon the filing and compliance with TNEC Pay-to-Play Disclosure Ordinance. Be it further resolved, that the brief legal notice be published in the legal newspapers of the Township of TNEC setting forth the nature, duration, service, and amount of the contract, and that the within resolution and a copy of the contract are on file in the office of the Township Clerk, and are available for public inspection. A certificate of availability of funds signed by the Township Chief Financial Office is on file in the office of the Township Clerk, and sufficient funds for this purpose are available under the 2015 temporary budget of the Township of TNEC.
Thank you. And before we open up Good and Welfare, I just want to make a motion to table ordinance number five, 2015. Roll call.
Councilman Castle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Five, 2015.
Councilwoman Schwartz? Councilwoman Stone?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Good and Welfare is now open.
Mayor.
I just have to read to the other two.
Okay.
Okay. Resolution S. Be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of TNEC that the council hereby amend its 2015 annual council meeting schedule to change the start time of the January 28th, 2015 council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM to allow the council time, ample time for discussion of redevelopment. Formal action may or may not be taken. Resolution T. Be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of TNEC pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act that the Township Council meet in closed session to discuss on January 28th, 2015, the township manager's evaluation and redevelopment, which subject matters are permitted to be discussed in closed session pursuant to the following designated subsections of Section Seven of the Open Public Meetings Act. Subsection Five, dealing with the acquisition of real property, the setting of bank rates, or the investment of public funds where discussion thereof would adversely affect the public interest. Subsection Seven, dealing with pending or anticipated litigation, contract negotiations, or matters falling within the attorney-client privilege. And Subsection Eight, concerning personnel matters dealing with employment, appointment, termination, or terms and conditions of employment of any person or persons, or the evaluation, promotion, or disciplining of employees unless all employees involve consent to disclosure thereof. And be it further resolved, that as precisely can be determined at this time, the discussion conducted in said closed session can be disclosed to the public upon taking final action thereon, or upon provided disclosure shall not violate the attorney-client privilege or constitute an undue invasion of privacy. And be it further resolved, that is precisely, that the Township Council may return to open session at 8:00 PM specifically- o'clock P.M. specifically to receive input from the public on any matter under Good and Welfare on January twenty eighth, two thousand fifteen.
Councilman Castle?
Yes, before we start Good and Welfare, Mayor, I just, I had an opportunity to go back and review our audio from our council retreat. And I got a chance to just go back and hear the deputy mayor's comments. Sorry, I had a chance to go back and review the audio from our council retreat. And I thank the residents who were able to attend. I got a chance to go back and actually review the audio of the deputy mayor about the three, three, and three. And I can only go back to a conversation I had with Mr. Rupp some weeks ago about needing an ordinance to change an ordinance. And I believe that we changed Good and Welfare and limited the public's time to speak to five minutes or from five minutes to three minutes with a resolution. And as I am not one who was in support of that, I just want to make sure that, you know, at least during my tenure, if we're going to do something, if we're going to, at least of that measure, that we do it by way of an ordinance as opposed to the resolution. And if we did do it incorrectly, that we allow the public to speak for five minutes this evening and that we bring that ordinance back up, we open it up, you know, we have a hearing about it, we let the public comment on it. Once again, I'm not in support of limiting Good and Welfare from five to three, but if I am on the wrong side of that vote and we do do it, I think that it should at least be done correctly.
If I recall correctly, the discussion that we had at the retreat was to do it by resolution temporarily until we decided if it works, and then we would amend it by ordinance. And I believe that the attorneys indicated that we could do so.
Yes, and in fact, it's set forth specifically in the resolution adopted at the council meeting, last council meeting, specifically Sections two dash sixteen D and Section two dash twenty-one that allows the council to make those temporary modifications by resolution.
And you indicated that at the retreat as well. Councilman Stone?
Again, my concern is that it was, there was a very, very clear discussion that this would be temporary. The only way this could be done by resolution is if it is temporary. Looking at the minutes, the minutes discussed at the third three of the three, three, and three was to limit the council discussion on council listed items to three minutes. That was not something that was discussed. And my concern is, based on case law, most notably John Ethen Ganamort versus Barrow Fort Lee, which was reviewed nineteen seventy-seven by the New Jersey State Supreme Court, the issue was raised that, again, what is the nature of temporary? Temporary needs to have an end date. And just as we've faced with the issue and had faced with the potential issue on rent control, there is no sunset. And I would be happy to have modified that resolution to have it have a clear sunset, but it doesn't. And as far as I see it, if we have a temporary ordinance, a temporary resolution that changes this without a sunset, it is a permanent ordinance, a permanent resolution in which case it needs to be an ordinance. And I think that we should amend that so that we have a clear sunset, whether it's for the month of January, it's for three meetings, five meetings, that we come to some agreement on that. But I am concerned that this does not qualify as temporary as case law is shown.
Mayor, if I could just note that all resolutions are temporary because they all expire at the end of the term of the council. In Teaneck's case, it's actually two years. Having said that, however, I will also note that the council may at any moment, if it wishes, repeal this resolution just by moving that it be repealed. I have drafted an ordinance that has not been introduced yet because quite frankly the intent was that this would be a trial period to determine whether or not it would work. Again, assuming after three months the council thinks it works, then they will instruct me to submit the ordinance. If they determine that it is not working, they can at that time move to repeal the resolution.
Again, a majority of council decided that they wanted to try this trial basis, and I'm going to move forward with us trying it. As I recall the retreat, there was unanimous consent to do that, but we all remember things differently. So at this time, I would like to open up Good and Welfare to the public. You have an opportunity to address the council for three minutes about any item on the agenda or any item you wish to bring before us. Sir? And welcome back. I haven't seen you at a council meeting in quite some time.
Well, that's actually the first of my three minutes is to apologize. I've been, you know, my work schedule and I've been away-- Oh, David, sorry, Spielman. I've been away for the summer and I've been working. It's great to be back and to welcome and congratulate all the new office holders. I don't know if it's too late. I know, I think we already did the ordinances, but I want to point, I just noticed it, it's a little confusing as to whether or not, when it says two AM to six AM of that day, if they mean that night. So if it's Sunday, technically Monday morning, or if it's that morning. Also, in particular with those holidays listed here that begin the evening before. And also it says Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday. Traditionally, the holiday that is celebrated is not his actual birthday, but the Monday thereabouts. Also, the, obviously, we all know, since it is budget season, the township's biggest expense by far is liability. And I'm noticing all these new things, including joining a joint insurance fund and hiring a liability consultant and as well as a labor attorney. And I'm curious to see, to ask what we expect this to bring down our level of liability. Just thinking here, trying to rush through the three minutes in my head. Do want to point out with regards to the, also, maybe you can use the power of the purse to end the redundancy in engineering or renegotiate with the township's engineer so that we're no longer paying for them to also cover services that they're no longer providing to the Board of Adjustment. And then with regards to the CSX, as was pointed out, that is a federal issue. We don't really have, we have little, if any, jurisdiction over the matter. And I do want to point out that for better or for worse, hazardous materials have been coming through the rivers up the division in Teaneck for the better part of a century. Though if we are going to do something about it, we should work together, not only with other communities in Bergen County, but also Rockland County, and it goes all the way up to Albany, up to just shy of Albany, it's Kirk, New York. Selah Kirk, New York, thank you. I can never pronounce it. And I'm sure there's something that I'm forgetting, but it'll have to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mauser?
Ms. Mauser, and this will take less than three minutes. Some time ago, street signs were put up that were marvelous. They were blue and white, and they were very visible at night. And half the town seems to have them, and half the town seems not to have them. And I wonder, is this the end of the project? Is it the middle of the project? Is it going to be complete?
Thank you, Ms. Mauser. Dr. Sheen?
I'll start with what I spoke at the previous meeting, which was not televised. The three-minute limit put on residents is muzzling the public at the time of budget discussion. It's certainly a move towards more authoritarian rule instead of relative democracy that we had here. And I know better than anybody there and probably in the room who knows what authoritarian rule is. I lived under it, and I didn't come here for petty bureaucrats muzzling me and do not allow me to tell about ideas. Therefore, you see, those who support this three-minute rule, okay, I'll refer to as comrades, okay? And our mayor, I'll refer to as Madam Chairman, while just an example--
I prefer to be referred to as Chairwoman.
--of Mauser Dunk, who was a good expert of authoritarian rule. Now, the thing is that please cancel it because public very often have better ideas than you do. Furthermore, you do not read what is given to you. I gave the proposal for the Board for Technology and Engineering. You didn't read it. So the thing is, you say you don't know what, you say nothing came from Financial Advisory Board, so what comes from here, I don't understand. Okay, already from here comes the announcement of any information during the blackouts, emergency information through radio. And so, three million, three hundred thousand dollars allocated in bond for these audio signals is not necessary because radios work in the cars all the time and ship. Second thing is, is I suggested one thing for allowing people not to lose heat during the cold winter blackouts because that switches off the boilers. And I found now the way, which is now, I got yesterday the note from the Division of Codes and Standards from Trenton that what I suggested now is okay. So, and it will cost about a hundred dollars per house to just keep in warm, and no warming place unnecessary. It's already done. You don't know that? Too bad, Madam Chairman, okay? So please, okay, please watch and ask people because there are good suggestions from the floor, including suggestion about the rent increase. Now we have lawsuit on our hands. Instead of tabling it and discussing it at least, and invite some landlords before that.
Thank you, Dr. Sheen. Would anyone else, sir?
How are you? Let me just sit a little bit. My name is Jonathan Vogel. I'm a life-long Teaneck resident. I'm very proud to be a Teaneck resident. I used to play Little League here, and now I'm a coach and on the board of the TBO organization, and I'm here to speak on their behalf. Our fields have fallen into disrepair, and we're hoping to bring them back to their former glory. I went ahead and I took some pictures. I don't know if this is the right time. Perhaps I can--
You can give them to the clerk.
Okay. Of some of the drainage issues that we have on the fields. And specifically, you know, when it rains, very often we have to wait a day or two. We're moving games around. We have several hundred kids in TBO that we, you know, that we have to, it makes it difficult for us. We have, so, I will turn this up there. The dugouts, especially at our premier field, at the clubhouse field, are really in disrepair as well. And the height is only about five and a half feet tall. So I'm constantly, and myself and the other coaches, we're banging our heads on it. It is, if you look at it, I just think it doesn't represent our town very well. We have travel teams that come in, and they see our fields, and it's really, it's not impressive. And it should be. It should be. And it's something that the kids should be, should be proud of. That doesn't look good. You got that? All right. Okay, fencing is also an issue. Our fences are rusty, and many of the doors don't work. They have sharp edges, and we have many holes in the fences. And our benches as well, the benches, all of the, there are several repairs to be made. Now, what I ask, what we're asking of the council, and I'd like to, I'd like to thank Mr. Burton and Mr. Stone and Mr. Schwartz for giving us, for meeting with us and speaking with us. And I'd like to, I'd like to ask for your support to put money into the budget to make it a, to make it something that is a priority to fix in our town so that, you know, it's something we can be proud of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rose?
Howard Rose, I speak as a resident of Teaneck. First of all, let me mention to all of you that when I talk about using the microphone, it's not an admonishment to you, it's a plea. I know that we tend to speak one direction or another, and that means the mic doesn't follow us because we don't keep it close enough. I remember when these microphones were bought, I suggested at that time, get something that attaches to the head so that the mic travels with your mouth. That's what it's supposed to do. Regarding the traffic manual, I understand that it's a guide of what we must do, but I agree with the council members who want to go further, that you are enabled to enhance and do more than what that manual mandates you must do. Holiday decorations, I believe this town is equitable. It's fair. It reviews, it's ongoing regarding decorations for all sorts of religions. On the other hand, I don't agree that the municipal government should be involved in it at all. There should not be decorations fostered on the green by the township of any religion. It's a tacky, sticky feel that you're playing on when you do that. There are substantial numbers of businesses and private homes that have an option of displaying what, where, and when they want to various decorations. As an example, in past years, some of those years, I had decorations for several holidays concurrently. Looked nice. I liked it. I enjoyed myself. The government has no business doing it whatsoever. Regarding Judge, is it Hawkins or Hawkins? I hope that this guy coming from Morris County is paid when he gets here and not when he gets in his car at home if he's an hourly employee. Regarding the three-minute rule that you're putting in to effect, on the one hand, it might be good because it'll make people be more concise. Or if necessity mandates it, perhaps they'll have to get someone else who's a resident and tag team in a common cause to get there several more than three-minute points across. I'm a little confused, and I hope it's clarified. I thought that the Good and Welfare was being placed way at the tail end of the meeting, whereas tonight it was a half hour later than normal, so not extraordinary under any circumstance. So I'd like a little just clarification on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Hector Ferrer, Teaneck. Good evening, respected board, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager. With all due respect, I cannot speak for Chasing, New Jersey, and I'm very sorry that you are offended, but the facts that were covered in the interview are irrefutable. It's regrettable that while you were council, councilwoman, since two thousand and six, this matter has been pending. Today, you are mayor, and the appearance of impropriety is further increased by now shifting the vote and the discussion to the city manager. The objective for my submitting the proposed ordinance, as evidenced by the ordinance itself, it is one hundred percent equally accommodating to all displays in accordance with the Supreme Court's decision. There appears to be a greater hostility under your management, and with all due respect, the facts are irrefutable. The menorah appears to be at a superior level than the nativity scene. There's historical facts that prove it. It is a shame that this matter has been going on for seven years through five mayors. I respectfully request and formally request that this matter go for a vote. I would like to know, and the public deserves to know, which council member support and do not support this ordinance. It is one hundred percent accommodating to all respected religions. And with all due respect, Council, Son, we've had an incredible conversation. Your input right now is vital because, again, the appearance of impropriety grows even further. This matter could be resolved this evening, right now. There appears to be further stonewalling, now going into the manager's hands. This is a decision that should be made in accordance with the adopted model laws where let it move before the council to make, to have a vote taken, and let every councilperson make their position made clear and public, not in hidden agendas and so forth. It is unfortunate that after seven years, this is still an ongoing matter. I assure you, if there was an issue with the menorah, this matter would have been resolved a long time-- a long time ago. There's never been an issue about the technical issues with the menorah, the placement of the menorah, even though it's been placed for over two decades in the same position. And we thank God for that. It deserves to be there, but so does every other display, absent of any hostility, in accordance with the Supreme Court's decision. Thank you and God bless you.
Okay, Art Vasquez, TNEC, New Jersey. I was at home watching this meeting and as soon as I turned on the set, someone was talking about my house, my corner. And I don't know what it was about. It said, "Art Vasquez's corner." So, I'd like to find out about that.
We filed eminent domain now.
But, why was that?
Eminent domain on your home.
You'll have a fine.
Just kidding.
Okay. Before I forget, for Mr. Ferrer and his comments, I know they're impassioned, but really, there is a lot of other places to display religious media and the town green is not one of those places. The Supreme Court would not take offense if we stopped the precedent of mounting these things. You can see the jealousy that can exist between one religion and another. And history says to me that as long as we're a country of freedom of religion, don't cloud it up by using municipal public property to display religious symbols. About the movement of the speaking, let's, let's just say that in the need to, I don't think running a town has gotten simpler, but this council has gone from two, from two meetings and a workshop to two meetings. And maybe you wouldn't have to move the meeting, the Good and Welfare, and you need to hear what's done. We've made changes because of the public speaking. I think you need to add that workshop back into your schedule. One workshop, meeting a month. In addition, I saw the TNEC Times, very good, much improved in terms of the evacuation, but there's really only two roads that will take you out of TNEC going to the west. And I think those Cedar Lane and Route Four. So, I'm going to suggest that rather than people make their own evacuation route road, they're going to end up on one of those two roads. So, to please mark those two roads as evacuation routes. That's what they do down near the shore and it'd be clearer for everybody. There's a lot of roads, streets that go to River Road and then they have to go to Cedar Lane or to Route Four. So, to please consider doing, doing that, otherwise people will get backed up and jammed up. And the police can help with that. About the railroad, CFSX Railroad, oh, I did that. I'm going to ask again, I don't know where it stands, I assume it stands more than just me mentioning it, the dashboard cameras and the body cameras for our police officers.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. Would anyone else, Ms. Lewis?
Early in the week, TNEC, and I don't want to use all my minutes up, but I do agree with Mr. Ferrer with the nativity scene, that it's not very visible and it needs a nice light to shine on it. And I think the menorah and bowls should be there. But, when I'm sending you, I'm here to represent the TNEC Road Business Community Alliance and I'm referring to ordinance 5215, 5215, section 33-25G. Thank you. Number seven, which reads, "The outdoor storage and sale of not more than five automobiles shall be permitted." The TNEC Road Business Community Alliance, we represent the northeast section of TNEC, that's the entire section with all the block associations. We also represent the businesses on TNEC Road from Selvage to Tryon Avenue and many of the businesses now have joined in as members. And we're opposed to having the sale of automobiles on TNEC Road. I think it should read instead, when you do amend it, "The outdoor storage and sale of automobiles shall not be permitted." We don't want TNEC Road to become a corridor of used car lots, and that's what it would become. Okay? Also on number five, just adding the word where it says, "The use of motor vehicle service station or public garage for overnight parking for customers' vehicles." That way, they won't go around it and try to still have the used car lots. We don't want it to look like, no offense to like 46, where they have all those used car lots. So, we want TNEC Road to stay, family businesses we have there and other businesses and it's where they've been working very hard to keep it decent and clean and neat and we wanted to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? Dr. Hoffman?
Ken Hoffman from TNEC. First, little coherently, the idea of having a votee sports complex advisory committee, advisory board, really is essentially formalizing what was already done and the magnificent, outstanding work that our administration did on an emergency basis with Mr. Brown and Mrs. Crockett, Mr. Warren, council, being involved and really is preventive, it's prophylactic. It's not anything against what has happened, it's really in support of what was done and I think will really solve a lot of problems that occurred in the fall. But I would like to talk a little bit about ordinance, proposed ordinance 2-2015 on background checks for sports organizations. And I have a few questions and I don't, I'm really not sure if this is the place to, at the time to do it, but I am going to bring it up now. Mentions that you're going to do a state police background check for all the coaches, teen parents, anybody who's on the field with the children under the age of 18. And I am not aware of whether or not that will be acceptable to the organizations that we belong to, such as Pop Warner Football, United States Soccer Federation, U.S. Club, Little League, Babe Ruth League, Cal Ripken, which essentially uses what used to be called LexisNexis, but is now called First Advantage and have their own background checks and safety plans that we actually pay for. We discussed this a little bit last night in the PPRAB. The cost is relatively minimal and I would not like to feel that we may have to pay for something twice, which is essentially doing exactly the same thing. So, that may be one aspect to look into. Secondly, I don't know if there is any cost, I didn't see anything in the resolution that may be an issue. We already pay for our background checks when we sign up through our organizations when you get our liability insurance and turn that into the league. And Bollinger would certainly have a lot of information on that. Question of whether or not to use also Rutgers Safety, the course that gives volunteer coaches total liability as long as there's no punitive actions and really is a magnificent thing for the last 20 years and is also covered by U.S., by state statute. Wanted to know about what about organizations that deal with youth but then rent our fields, whether or not they would have to go through a state police background check before getting a permit from the recreation department in order to use it, as well as what about the towns or the teams that come visit our fields and may go through Little League, Babe Ruth League, high school, whatever, because high school does not do this type of, they do a different type of check with the state. We've all had our fingerprinted many times and I think we just need a clarification on this as well. The idea itself is fantastic. I think in today's day and age, not doing it is a tremendous liability, but I think we need to think a little bit clearer and be very explicit in what we require and what is acceptable to the township for the protection of our children and our families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Powers?
I'd like to start by saying how much I, Chuck Powers from TNEC, how much I am excited about the fact that most money might actually go to something other than a particular field in Votee Park. But I'm very worried and I also want to point out to everybody that our friends over against the, against the Brits, people in Fort Lee, were able to construct an entire outdoor ice rink and with lights for $15,000 to not, you're being asked to spend $73,000 to design bathrooms and a concession stand. If Mr. Gianferaro's ratio between what he gets and what he actually produces is correct, you will end up spending 2.2 million dollars in order to get a couple of bathrooms and a concession stand, which you should have put in long ago. It is, that is exactly the ratio between what Mr. Gianferaro got in terms of his design for Votee Park and what you ended up spending, 4.2 million dollars. I want to talk a little bit about the issue of three in five minutes and the process by which you did it. Councilman Stone had it exactly right. What the deputy mayor proposed was three, three, and three, and he meant three meetings. What you then repeated, mayor, was three, three, and three, three meetings. It had nothing to do with what the minutes of that meeting said about, anything to do with the limitation on your time on council-related matters. I'm going to produce tomorrow the nine minutes in which you folks make that, make that discussion. You can see it on tnecransparency.com. If in fact, there's a dispute about what it was, that there was agreement about. Indeed, I never heard the former mayor ever agree to the five-minute cut to the three minutes. He actually ended up saying, he thought it was, he would always vote against it. He didn't, but that's what he said. What you instructed your council to do was to develop a specific tryout, three, three, between you and every speaker for a period of three meetings. End of story. Nothing about temporary. There was a discussion that Mr. Terrence led about what temporary might mean and that was that you would have a revised ordinance if you are going to make it permanent in this January meeting, but we don't have that. It is very important that we keep track of actually what's being said. I want to add one last thing. The fact that the minutes of that meeting appeared before the time at which, before the time at which you had approved it, is in direct violation of the code of the township of TNEC. You are not allowed to have minutes come before this council, before the end of, before they have actually been reviewed and approved by the council. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the council? Senator Weinberg?
Thank you and good evening. I had the occasion this weekend to listen to an audio that was circulated among many residents in TNEC, which I guess took place at your, at the council retreat. The only portion of the audio that I listened to had to do with the rezoning of Route Four, portions of Route Four, to allow billboards and a hotel, I think. The reason for this rezoning, and the township attorney spoke at great length, was this is the only way you can find out what kind of income you will get from a billboard. Well, I can tell you 10 different ways you can find income that you can get from a billboard. Look at the budgets of various towns and look at their income, those towns that have billboards, like for instance, River Edge and Hackensack, and see what comes in for rental of billboards. Call the League of Municipalities, call a billboard company. I was really rather taken aback that we were rezoning a whole area of town to find the answer to what kind of income would come from billboards. And I thought I heard in this audio, the township attorney say that he had called the Department of Transportation for information and got zilch. So, I called the Department of Transportation for information about what's going on. And lo and behold, I found that there is an application from a private business in TNEC pending at the Department of Transportation for a billboard at 414 Alfred Avenue. That application was put in on behalf of the business owner by the billboard company and a letter was sent from the state of New Jersey back to that billboard company, which says in part, "This permit does not grant permission to erect or maintain an advertising sign on state highway right of way. This permit is conditional unless a public hearing has been held in accordance with the provisions of Section 6, et cetera, et cetera, where the permit applicant is a private entity. All relevant local appeals required by the municipality have been received by the private entity seeking the permit." So, in other words, I'm not a lawyer, but if I read that in plain English, if you rezone this area, you have given a private business the right to erect a billboard. And that private business, I assume, will get the income from that billboard, not the town of TNEC, but the business owner. In addition, I did call one of the council members, Councilmember Katz, to have a discussion with him about this. And he informed me in the conversation that it was some kind of a subcommittee of the council that had some kind of a meeting with, I'm not sure, Alfred Avenue business owners or Alfred Avenue property owners or Alfred Avenue residents. I think that subcommittee should report to this council on what the meeting was about and what are your plans? Now, I am not here to speak for or against the redevelopment of Alfred Avenue. If that is in the best interests of the town, then go ahead and do it, but do it straightforwardly. The idea that you would rezone to get a bid from a, from a billboard company is really rather appalling. And then to find out that there is already an application from a private business owner in TNEC who would be able to put up a billboard if you do this rezoning. So, I would like to specifically ask if you are planning to rezone or planning to talk to a developer, that's within your purview and maybe it will help with the taxes in TNEC and maybe it will give us a boost. I'm not passing any judgment on that, but I am passing, let me put it this way, I am asking questions as to why you chose to put forth an ordinance to rezone a whole area of our township ostensibly to find out what kind of income you'll get from a billboard company and to point out to you that if in fact, you do that rezoning, you have given permission to a private property owner to put up a big billboard on his property. I brought a copy of all of this, which I will leave with your township attorney and I would really like to hear some discussion of this from this council.
Thank you, Senator Weinberg. Would anyone else, Naomi?
The problem with three minutes is that when you have a lot of things going on at a meeting, you muzzle those people, those of us who want to speak to all of those issues. Three minutes might not just be enough. Some of my comments have to do with the December 3rd audio. I think everybody should listen. It's very difficult. It's not fair that you have planned all kinds of action based on a meeting that had no agenda that included any of the things that you discussed and that you have action planned on a meeting that we can't even hear. The audio was so bad, I had to sit next to my CD player, or whatever it's called. Anyway, glad you discussed workshops there. Hopefully, you will go ahead with this and have bimonthly workshops, as Jason Castle suggested. And when we're talking about workshops... And when we're talking about workshops, there were tremendously negative attitudes expressed at that meeting about public input. And your switching to three minutes only endorses those negative attitudes and feelings about public opinion and public discussion. For example, Councilwoman Katz feels that those of us who want to hear your deliberations at workshops on issues before the council meetings, before votes are taken, are only interested in having another meeting at which to vent. That's what he said, okay? This attitude goes along with Dr. Pruitt's comments, that those who are against billboards are tree huggers, who come out to complain about everything, and we must resist them. This is all in sync with the advice of your attorney, who told you, "Never, never, never cave to public opinion because that makes you look weak." So here we go, five minutes to three minutes, and all these attitudes expressed in a meeting on December 3 that barely could be heard. Is that how you really feel about us? Really upsetting. The attorney also gave you non-legal advice, that you had to include zoning a hotel along with billboards. I sent this out. Most of the people who wrote back to me say, "Why do you have to have a hotel in order to get a quote on a billboard? It didn't make any sense." But the lawyer insisted upon it. You need to have separate discussions of Alfred Avenue, what you want to do there, whether you want a hotel, and then a billboard that a private company is going to reap the benefits of, if that's what happens.
Thank you, Naomi.
See, I don't have enough time to even finish talking about the Meadowlands easement, about other things that came up at that meeting, because I'm cut to three minutes, which may not even be legal, what you did. You cannot change an ordinance with resolution.
Would anyone else like to address the council? Deanna?
This is Deanna Pomerand-Walk. I've sent you the packet on the 671 Pomerand-Walk property and the Meadowland Conservation Trust. And so I think you know how I expressed myself with that, urging you to give the highest level of protection to that property from all who would offer protection. So I'm here more to speak to chatter. I live on Pomerand-Walk since 1960, have witnessed all the changes over the decades. Two are very sensitive floodplain environments. And I have heard chatter, not from one, not from two, but maybe from three or four councilmen in that maybe enclosed session, which perhaps you need to bring back workshops because the public develops mistrust and creates imaginations of what are you talking about in closed session when it regards people's homes or people's neighborhoods or communities? Asking you to bring back at least a workshop session, but in terms of Pomerand, I had heard chatter that maybe you were looking into the leaf transfer station again, and was there any other use for those nine acres, perhaps a development, which I had inferred. You know, if there could be an open workshop, I wouldn't have to infer anything. So I need to say, at least if you are discussing Pomerand, our natural acres, and I am your closest neighbor to all those natural acres, and I've lived there my whole life, at least include myself, who understands these lands, and my neighbors, whose lives would be tremendously affected by any changes that you would propose in closed session, before it ever comes to public, you may have already decided. So I become worried about it, and that worry could be cleared up if the issue was involved the community or at least was made public. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Mickey?
I'm here again to talk about the municipal parking lot. Thank God, we are getting more spaces over at the Richard Rota Center, and that's going to be helpful once they put parking in there. We still have 28 parking spots for employees. The answers I get for that are, if we didn't have the parking spots for the employees, we wouldn't get services. I'm still trying to figure that one out because the employees still come at 8:00 in the morning, and they can have any choice of parking spot they want. Why should there be separate ones for employees? The other answer I got, the second answer I got was, well, we need those parking spots because we have the court on Tuesdays in the afternoon, on Thursday afternoons, and so forth. So we need spots for the criminals. Well, some of them are not, they're not criminals, they get away with it. Anyhow, the third choice, the third choice is that then the spots are for the residents. Okay? So first, it's the parking spots for employees, second, spots for the people going to court, the criminals. The second one, the third choice is for the residents. And we find them driving around and around while the spots for the employees is still empty, especially on Friday, when there's a skeleton crew. I was told there's a skeleton crew for employees. There was a, sent a notice to the employees that they should use the employee parking spots. Whether they are or not, I don't know. I'm not there at 8:00 in the morning. But they have any choice they want of any spot. That's what I don't understand. Then I was told that we really need a second story for parking. How are we going to put that in? I have no idea. This ordinance was written in 2001, why, ordinance number 36-30. Why it was put in, probably because the new police department was put in, and they probably needed spots for that. I think we should have two spots for the judge and the prosecutor. I think we should have some, two spots for the council, even though a couple of weeks I did meet one of the council people that was parking in the employee's parking spot. And I said, "How come you're doing that when there's a spot for you for council?" And he said, "Well, if somebody doesn't like what I'm saying, they're going to key my car." So I don't want to let them, honest to God, and, which is probably true, there are people here that get really angry, and they probably would be.
Thank you, Mickey.
So anyway, I hope something is going to be done, done about it. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the council? Laura?
My name is Laura Zucker, Teneck resident. Just a couple of things. It's been kind of a crazy month. I've been very busy. I kind of feel like I'm wearing all different hats because I'm involved in so many things outside of this township. But a couple of events have happened this past month, which kind of brought me back in with like a [laugh]. And some of the things is, I'd really like to know what is happening with the Nappersack property. I have heard a lot of different things. I've spoken with a lot of different people. I've been told that the Meadowlands Trust has to come after green acres. Well, that's not how it went the first time around. I'd like to know whether, what is the intent of this council? Do you intend to put it into protection for perpetuity or not? And if you are, how do you plan to go about that? I have heard that you didn't want perpetuity done because in case there is a development which has been pulled out of thin air on the leaf station, you might want a few feet of the Nappersack property to be able to build. Now, I did write a communication to you, and I said, "Just tell the developer to redevelop and remove it from the Nappersack property." The other thing that I found really insulting was the billboard mess, that we need to pass an ordinance and a resolution and all of this in order to find out a price for what we would get. I don't like it when my intelligence gets insulted, and I don't like it when someone tries to pull stuff over townspeople. And now we find out that a private entity on Alfred Avenue wants to put up a billboard, and we won't get any revenue. I think some of these, the council people, maybe need to stop looking and listening to your experts, because I could tell you about my experience with experts, including the one who said my husband didn't have prostate cancer from sun-kettering, and he did. I don't really like experts. I can find other experts. If you're told something, listen to your gut. Why would you need to pass a resolution or an ordinance or anything to find out whether it costs? Go onto a website, call a damn company. But I really would like to know, okay, because now I'm going to represent the Sand Hill and the UN, and an NGO called the NAIP, what is your intent with the Nappersack property? Thank you.
Would any other members of the public like to address the council? Good and Welfare is now closed. Mr. Terrence, if you could, there are a couple of items, well, let me just work myself way down. The blue signs, Mr. Manager, what is the status of the signs?
The blue signs, we have every intention of continuing forward with the signs and replacing all the signs in the township. We install signs as we have the staff available to install the signs. They've been working in town from the east of the railroad tracks, from south to north. They've completed most of the signs on the eastern side of the tracks. The reason we haven't done areas like River Road and some of those main roads is because they haven't had signs in the past, and many of the poles need to be replaced, and it's going to take more time to get those poles installed. But we do have a plan, and we're moving across the town as manpower permits, and we're replacing those signs because we're able to make the signs. So it's something that's in the process.
Thank you. And Mr. Rose, just, you asked a question about the placement of Good and Welfare on the agenda. The goal of the meeting, to change the meeting, to add the council listed items, the manager's report, and the township attorney's report, is to allow the public to see our discussion about things that are important to us individually, so that the public can then make a comment on those items during Good and Welfare. I personally like the way it worked this evening. Time will tell whether or not it'll work, but I think starting the meeting off with those items and not putting them at the back end at 11:00, when we're tired and the public is gone and disinterested at that point. So that was the reason for the change. The goal ultimately is to try to get as close to 9:00 as possible to have Good and Welfare. Today, we were half an hour off, and, you know, we'll try to do better, but that was the intent of changing the meeting lineup. This wasn't spoken about, but Art Vasquez had mentioned at a council meeting, having a signage for directional sign on Route Four to our business district. Did we ever follow up on that?
We haven't installed the sign, no, on Route Four.
Okay. Can we add that?
I'll see if we can install one.
Okay. And when are the welcome, I mean, happy holidays signs going to come down off of Route Four?
I know that they're working on taking down all Christmas decorations. They've taken the ones down here, and I'll.
Holiday decorations?
Holiday decorations.
We don't want to give preference to, no, we chase Christmas, right? We chase Christmas out of Teneck. I think that's what they say.
Yeah, no, I'll find out. They should be coming down real soon.
Okay. And as far as the TVO, at the last council meeting, we discussed looking at all of our fields and making a preference priority list, you know, specifically for the safety of the, our younger residents that play on those fields. Can we reach out to Mr. Vogel?
I had a meeting with him today.
Okay.
So we had a meeting today. I met with TVO. We had a, you know, DPW, engineers, we all met. Replacing, out of most funds, I plan to recommend to the council, and we've talked about this before, $100,000 for upgrade of clubhouse field. And today, we started talking about how we're going to approach it. First thing we want to do is get a plan. We need to get the dugouts fixed, but we want to make sure as we move along in the execution of our plan that we don't have to do things twice. So the dugouts need to be set at the right height, you know, as we move forward. So that's, we're in the works, and we're moving.
Okay. Thank you. Lilian, we tabled ordinance number 5, 2015. For some of the reasons that you brought up, I am not in support of encouraging used car lots on Teneck Road. So that's tabled, and we'll see where that goes. After I finish with this report, I'm going to ask Deputy Mayor Katz if he can give a report, a public report on the zoning subcommittee and what they're doing. Double paying for background checks. Dr. Hoffman mentioned that the Leagues are bound by certain background checks. Can we review some of the things that he indicated to make sure that we're not duplicating? Do we need to, yeah, maybe we should pull it so that we have an opportunity to look at some of the things that he brought up this evening. Billboards. Stan, we spoke prior to the meeting. If you could just report on what Senator Weinberg discussed.
I'm going to turn the details of the proposed ordinance to Mr. Ruff, but let me go back to what really happened with the billboard, the first time it was being considered by the council, maybe a year and a half ago or two years ago. I don't remember the exact date. We actually brought CBS, one of the largest billboard companies, to make a presentation. And one of the issues that council was trying to ascertain was, how much money can we get for a billboard? And the range that came in from CBS was, it could be several hundred thousand dollars, or it could be millions of dollars over a 20-year period. It all depends exactly the type of billboard that's going to be allowed. And they would not reveal to us what they were actually paying for the most similar type of billboard in River Edge, dealing with either New Jersey Transit, who owns the property, or New Jersey DOP. We had given out some Oprahs to try to get the information, and we didn't get anything back on that information. So council wanted to know, how are we going to get an idea what the billboard's going to be? Are we talking a couple hundred thousand dollars, which is something that probably killed the idea in the first place, or is it going to be six or 10 million dollars over a 20-year period of time? And we were told by CBS and the attorney who represents CBS that until we actually can have specifications drawn, no one's going to give you a specific as to how much money they're going to be willing to pay. They're going to give you a range, and that range could be a few hundred thousand dollars, or it could be 6 million dollars. We asked for the actual lease that they have for River Edge, and they wouldn't give it to us. They were here, they were here at this particular meeting, and I think Councilman Gussin at the time asked them very specifically, "How much money are you paying on that particular property over what period of time?", and they refused to give the information. So if council wants to consider, if council wants to consider whether or not a billboard is a viable option, the only way it's going to have concrete numbers is to put out specifications for a billboard. And specifications mean you can build a billboard, you could put the billboard up. Right now, there's no zone that allows that. And I'm going to let Bill address the specifics, because the proposed ordinance only changes the zone for the property that's owned by the township of Teneck, and only allows a billboard on the property that's owned by the township of Teneck based on the conditional use that's been put in the ordinance. Nowhere would this ordinance allow the private owner to put up the billboard that his property's being zoned that way. Senator, you can shake your head, but that, if you read the ordinance, and Bill will give you the ordinance, that's what it'll be.
[inaudible]
So I'm going to ask Bill to give what the, what the ordinance, proposed ordinance allows, and it has nothing to do with a hotel. Absolutely nothing. Absolutely nothing to do with a hotel. Where that came out of the air, I don't know, but there's nothing in the ordinance for a hotel.
The proposed ordinance establishes a definition of the use of the term billboard and digital and static. It then amends a provision of the sign ordinance, which renders billboards as a conditional use. That conditional use is limited to the LI zoning district. It has as a condition that the parcel containing the billboard must have frontage on Route 4. As it turns out, the property at 414 Alfred Avenue does not have frontage on Route 4. It also requires that there be a minimum of 200 feet of frontage. It also requires that no part of the building may be, no part of the billboard may extend more than 100 feet from the Route 4 right-of-way. 414 Alfred Avenue is all located further than 100 feet from Route 4, and therefore not be eligible for a billboard under the conditions for the conditional use of a billboard. In order for, if this ordinance was adopted, in order for any other property to obtain a billboard not meeting those conditions, you would need a variance from a condition of a conditional use. That is known as a use variance. And because it's a commercial use, there's an enhanced burden under the case of medici, and therefore, it is a very difficult burden to justify the granting of a variance. Again, the purpose of this ordinance is essentially very limited. Finally, it does rezone that one, well, it's actually two parcels, because there's a small parcel owned by the state of New Jersey for some type of utility easement device, right? But it rezones that area from RS to LI, so it's from residential to light industrial.
Thank you, Mr. Rupp. As far as, can I have order, please? As far as Deanne Ip and Laura's comments, I find them a little bit troubling, because it almost appears as if they were sitting in closed session with us. But with that said, Mr. Turitz, if you could just give an update as to where we're at with the NAPRAC property?
The township owns the NAPRAC property, belongs to the township of Teaneck. The manager has submitted a grant to Green Acres to try to get some money back for what we paid for the property. I know of no discussions dealing with the development of anything in that particular area. I don't know where that came from, that there's been no discussions by anybody concerning that section of town. It's been focused on Alfred Avenue. It's been focused on Haluba. It's been focused nowhere near the NAPRAC property. And when we talk about the conservation easement, when Laura Zooker says it was reversed, we didn't wait for it. No, we didn't wait for it, but they also paid us $100,000 for that right to acquire that property. I haven't seen any offer of compensation from the conservation people in this particular time. They helped us buy the property at that time, and they paid us $100,000 so that we could acquire that property. They haven't done so on this particular time. Not that that means the council's not going to consider it, but at this point in time, there's been no discussion about anything other than acquiring the property. The township has successfully done that, and that we're now trying to get some money back for what we laid out and paid for that property. And to my knowledge, there's been zero discussion of anything dealing with development of that property, other than the conservation easement that you have requested, and that's on the council's table. But in terms of one before the other, this is the way we did it. And I don't know, maybe the conservation easement wants to contribute some money towards us. I guess you consider that as well.
Thank you. Let's start with Councilman Zone.
Okay, let's take it from the top. I do want to support Ms. Mauser in the discussion. We absolutely should start putting the blue and white signs on the major streets, whether it's River Road, whether it's Garrison, whether it's Fort Lee Road, Cedar Lane. This is a visual issue that can help promote safety. Once the major streets are complete, I really don't care when we do the signs inside the grid. It is really a safety issue on especially those streets where the speed limit is higher than 35. I do support the development of some of the construction on some of the TBO fields. Dr. Ken Hoffman gave me a picture 12 years ago, that was 13, 14 years ago, that was taken, the Clubhouse Field, and the fields have only deteriorated since then. They have gotten even worser, I believe is the word that I may have used. And now that they are even more atrocious, I think that work should be done. Mr. Rose, I do want to congratulate you and your two colleagues, Dr. Walzer and Clara Williams, on your term, taking your new terms on the Board of Education. And again, I just want to address Mr. Ferrer. Given that we do have a holiday display in sync with County of Allegheny versus ACLU of Greater Pittsburgh, 1989, the United States Supreme Court, if we do it, we should do it right. And I think that, I think we are heading in that direction. I think that we are getting it not perfect, but we are getting that much better than what we were doing. Dr. Powers, I do agree with you that we have to get this right. We have to get the process of identifying what we want, asking for what we want, getting the minutes in timely fashion so that we can review them, that the minutes are accurate, and that ordinances and resolutions that are drafted are being put in correctly. I do agree that we have to figure out a way of what to do with this billboard. I think this is already getting out of hand, and I am concerned that, again, we're looking at development at Alfred Avenue, and again, I'm just concerned that this, the billboard only contaminates that process. We have never had any discussion whatsoever about development at the leaf transfer station. None, zero. It's not even on the map. I do support a perpetual easement. I do think that we should speak with the Middlelands Conservation Trust. I don't think that the burial ground ends at the fence of the NAPRAC property. I do think that those properties should be protected. I am concerned about that. I am concerned about the way that the three-minute rule has been implemented, and I hope that we can address those issues, but I think so far, I think I'm pretty happy with how this meeting has went. And again, I want to thank all those people who are getting acclimated to this three-minute limit, and hopefully, we can get the business done that has to be done. I think that, as has been suggested by Naomi Kramer, we need to have workshops, and hopefully, if we implement those, we can really get done the work that has to be done.
I just have one comment in terms of the OT park. Dr. Powers' comment about the bathroom project that we're looking to take on and the cost, and there's a comment about a $15,000, all-inclusive, $15,000 with lighting, ice skating rink in Fort Lee. If I can just ask you to give information about that over to the manager or the clerk so we can have it circulated, that the record's not the record of source, the facts, that would be great. Thank you.
Just very quickly, just want to take a moment to clarify, and this is not a contentious issue in any way, shape, or form. When I swore, and I recognize that sometimes I'd be on the winning side of a vote and on the losing side of a vote. I was very much in favor of the three, three, and three, because there was a sunset resolution. But it not being included, or there was a sunset in that resolution, but because there was no actual clear sunset in the resolution that was adopted that I voted against, very much not in favor of it. I mean, if we did it for trial, I'm okay with that, but I don't think that we should go to the semantics of saying the resolution is temporary, you know, for as long as the council is. I think that's just a little childish, and I will say that on the record, but we need to do it. So let's put a sunset clause in there. I will say to Dr. Sheen, we can disagree without being disagreeable. I've learned, I'm learning continuously now to disagree with my colleagues and be, without being disagreeable, but I would ask that you not refer to our mayor as...
Madam Chairman.
Madam Chairman. I'd like for there to be a sense of decorum here, and I would very much like for us to model the behavior, but if you, I'm asking that as just a resident of Teaneck to yourself, sir, if you could refrain from doing those types of things. I am very much a favorite of background checks. I think that we should eliminate, as the mayor said, some of the redundancies. Regarding billboards, when I, Stanley, when you talked about billboards at the retreat, I couldn't help but to think about the time when my daughter wanted a toy from a Happy Meal, and I went to McDonald's, and I bought the Happy Meal, and she got the toy, and then she lost the toy. And I went back to get another toy, and he told me I had to buy another Happy Meal. And I kind of felt like, when the statement was made, that the only way that we could get numbers for billboards is if we did it with the hotel ordinance. It was there. I chuckled a little bit, because I just kept thinking about me having to buy another Happy Meal to get that toy, and I don't think that we should have to do that. Especially because back in last February, I called CBS Outdoor, and I also called Clear Channel. I spoke with the manager about it. Clear Channel was willing to give approximations of what those figures would be for billboards and the revenue. CBS was a little bit more reluctant. They said they would do it in closed session. Clearly, I wasn't a councilperson at the time, so I couldn't make any promises, but I think that there are ways that we can get that revenue without kind of lumping everything together. Regarding the NAPRAC property, and I just want to echo some of the sentiments of Councilman Zone, in no way, shape, or form have we ever had a conversation, I don't think even in closed or in open session, about redevelopment of the leaf transfer station. Sadly, you know, and I say sadly, I prefaced it by saying sadly, we had a conversation, Dan, you and I, and I tried to explain to you that I thought that we should protect the NAPRAC property in perpetuity, and that, you know, I didn't think it would infringe on any development that we've never talked about. I don't know if that was taken out, if you took that the wrong way, but you said you spoke to at least four members of, four councilmen, and if you spoke to a quorum of people who said that they were going to do something or not do it, I'm not part of that quorum, but I just want to make it clear, we never discussed redevelopment of the NAPRAC property or NAPRAC or the leaf transfer.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Well, Good and Welfare first, and then the update.
Okay, fine. You know, I guess my comments was just to Ms. Lewis, that we spoke, we tabled that resolution about Teaneck Road, and we're going to take your input into consideration, as well as the mayor had some comments as well. So I appreciate that. And then as far as the billboards, you know, obviously, I was concerned when our senator mentioned about the application, because our whole purpose of going through this motion, and I want to call it a motion, because nobody that I know has said we absolutely commit to this billboard. We're saying committing, the ones that I've heard saying that they want to go down the road, want to see what the revenue model is, and obviously, it's for us to go down this road and see what the revenue model is, and then for a private property owner to grab that revenue is counterproductive to what the attempt is, what we're trying to attempt here. So I'm glad to hear, if I heard it correctly, that this does not rezone the private property. Is that correct, Mr. Turitz?
The private property already zoned by the LI. So we're not rezoning the private property.
But we're...
At LPA.
Okay. All right.
White interest.
Fine. And that, I'm hopeful that we could still go through the process, and just correct me if I'm wrong. If we do get the bids in, do we have a second opportunity to say we're not interested in moving forward with this project?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, you said yes, right?
Yes.
Okay. So no one is committing to billboards by moving forward, by getting some type of more concrete information? It sounds like maybe it's the wrong way to look for information, but it also sounds like we've exhausted some other ways that were not successful. Now, certainly, if anyone could give us, you know, real numbers based on some of our neighboring towns that have identical, that could be helpful as well. It sounds like you weren't successful in achieving that, not because of your lack of effort, but because of their lack of interest in submitting it. Okay. So I am supportive of looking to see what the revenue would be, although I'm not supportive of hiring a consultant to draft the ordinance, and I'll make that very clear. I don't want to give away our potential revenue on a consultant. The specifications, there, I, I'm talking about the specifications, correct? All right.
Okay. So now, Good and Welfare is complete. Now, Deputy Mayor, if you can give a committee report on the...
I'll make it quick, but I'm not part of the three minutes for this, though. Zoning Subcommittee, just a quick, a quick history background for the rez. Zoning Subcommittee was created about eight years ago, and the intent was, at the time, we had a bottleneck on the planning board, over a four-month delay as far as applications to be heard, a bottleneck on the Board of Adjustment, that was close to six months of a delay, applications to be heard. And things were not going so well as far as the Building Department process. I call it the process because people label it as the Building Department, but there's a lot of other, you know, tubes that the applications go through, i.e., outside engineers. So we formed this, and one by one, we started tackling the different ordinances to see where we can create better efficiencies, where we can adapt at the times. What does it mean by adapt at the times? Well, if all of a sudden, after Hurricane Sandy, we're getting 40 applications a month on generators, and everyone is being approved, then maybe we can look to see what the commonality is and try to put less, less of a burden on our residents and less of a burden on the board. And those are the things that we looked at. And over the years, we've also invited different residents, guests, professionals, et cetera, into the meetings to get, to solicit their opinion. When we did the sign ordinance, we actually invited three or four sign manufacturers to get some of their suggestions. So it's our opinion, and we speak, and we make it very clear that we only speak as a subcommittee, and we cannot bind or commit the council as a whole, that we are two or three votes, plus we have the attorney and the manager. But it's my personal opinion that seeing Alfred Avenue is really our maybe last possible opportunity to bring in real significant revenue into Teaneck. And it's not something that's going to happen overnight. Even if we all decided today that this is a great idea, it's a six-to-eight-year task, in my opinion. There's so many different moving parts of this, and as I continuously see the taxes go up and up and up and up, and the residents of our town really suffering, and there's no better way to say it. Yes, there may be a portion of our residents that are not suffering, that can handle this, but I would say that there's a greater portion that, as much as they love this town and all the great amenities and our wonderful police department and fire department and all the great services that we provide, it's getting to be very challenging to continue to live here. And it's certainly going to be a lot more challenging to live here in six years or eight years from now. And we have decisions to make. We could start cutting some of our services, which nobody seems to want, or we could start trying to figure out how to bring in more revenue. And over the years, we've done a decent task of, a decent job of bringing in some additional creative revenue, but it's really not enough, and it's not keeping up with the increase in taxes. So the only real potential viable, in my opinion, area that we can create something that's going to have minimal impact on the greater part of Teaneck is not the leaf transfer station, it's not even, in my opinion, the Haluba station, Haluba. It's Alfred Avenue, which is in excess of eight to 10 acres. I don't know exactly the number, but the neighbor on one side is Route 4, the neighbor on another side is a creek, the neighbor on the other side is Englewood, and I'm here for the residents of Teaneck. So for that reason, we said that this is the area we should be focusing on, and we've made several trips with the planner, et cetera, to that area. Now, in addition to that, we've heard that there's some nonprofits that are not only looking but seeking applications, but looking but seeking applications to just, not just be in there, but to be in other business districts, i.e., a nonprofit that was granting their application on American Legion. Now, some people may think American Legion is prime or ripe for development. It's not something that we're necessarily focusing on today, but you can't do it now with a nonprofit. Now, I'm a big supporter of nonprofits. I believe that they're, that they're an absolute value to every single community. But I also believe that there are certain areas that they should and should not be in. And a business district is not necessarily the most... And a business district is not necessarily the most, the best place for a nonprofit. It may be a very convenient place, but it's not necessarily the best place. And we heard that there was an application getting, being placed for a nonprofit, and I spoke publicly about this when somebody else asked us for a grant for that area, not a grant, an endorsing resolution. And there's no way for us, as you heard tonight, to get involved in the Board of Adjustment or Planning Board process, right? We can't even control who they hire. So there certainly cannot get involved in applications and telling them not to do an application when this is significantly in the best interest of the residents of TNEC. So we invited all the property owners, I'm sorry. All right. So we invited all the property owners in that area to come to the table, to listen to what the zoning Subcommittee had as far as conceptual. We had no actual ideas, we were more soliciting feedback, but we were also looking towards them to say, listen, this is a partnership between the town and the property owners, and you're the ones who are holding these properties, and it's important that you're part of the process, right? We don't want to get accused of doing things that are against process. So they came in early, and that was the, that was the genesis, that was the impetus, and that was the reason we had the meeting, and we basically just got a lot of great feedback. No solid solutions, but that's, that's what the meeting was about. Mr. Attorney, did you want to throw in anything else? Did I do it okay reflecting the...
I'd like to...
And this happened, by the way, last, last Thursday. It was less than, you know, it's still fresh, and I'll tell you, the property owners were very appreciative of the township making that gesture, of bringing them in and talking to them about what we're thinking, just like Deanne Nipp wants to know what we're thinking about in her neighborhood. Imagine what they want to know what we're thinking. And it could be helpful, because if we could give them the idea that, listen, before you get into a long-term lease or sell that property, we're thinking about this possible area to bring in revenue. Now, I don't know if we're going to have the support when it comes to push to shove to do something meaningful. I'm hopeful, and I hope for the residents' sake that we can do it, but we have to start down the course. Yes.
Sure.
Just to kind of support something that you just said there, we had an opportunity to meet with Trico, the, you know, the development company that did downtown Englewood, and their biggest concern was if they did look at our municipality, if the zoning was going to be there. I apologize. We had an opportunity to sit down with Trico, Trico, the developers that did downtown Englewood, and before we began the conversation, you know, and this was just the conversation between myself as a councilperson and, you know, a developer about looking at potential areas that we could develop in TNEC, and his concern was, would the zoning be there? He said, you know, if there's no, if there is no zoning, we don't even want to have conversations about areas where there wouldn't be zoning, so if TNEC is serious about it, you know, we're happy to come to the table and have a conversation, but if the zoning's not there, don't even bring it up. So I just wanted to add that to your comment.
Like the billboard, like the billboard, right? The zoning's there.
Thank you very much for that very complete report, Deputy Mayor. I'd like to move, and also for your efforts and that of the Subcommittee on looking at ways to make things easier for our residents and bring in additional revenue. I'd like to move the consent agenda, but before I do so, I want to table ordinance number two, 2015, until the manager has an opportunity to review what the Leagues are doing currently with respect to background checks. Oh. Can I just table it now since we have, I motioned to have a second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Castle?
What am I voting on?
The table, table ordinance two, dash, 2015.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Son?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, now I'd like to move the consent agenda to include raffles, the minutes for October 21st, December 3rd, December 17th, January 6th, January 6th, closed session. Do we still need to submit closed session minutes? Should we hold that until we have the minutes from the, from Councilman Zone?
That's up to Councilman.
Can we hold that?
If you want to.
Yes.
Mayor Magpul, resolution F.
I didn't even move it yet.
Okay, sorry.
Resolutions B through T. T. The bill is in the amount of...
With the exception of F.
With the exception of F, yes.
And the bill is in the amount of $5,570,516.75.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Castle?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Katz?
Yes, with abstaining on the bill list and abstaining on ordinance one, two, oh, one, five. Oh, we didn't do the ordinance, so I'll hold on to that.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Son?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, with an abstention on, I don't have the check number, but whatever check is made out to me. For reimbursement for weddings. Okay, we now have introduction, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just, I want, I want to pull resolution F just because it seems like an exorbitant amount of money, $73,000 for bathroom and a grandstand, or no, I'm sorry, a snack bar or whatever it is, concession stand, thank you, that's the word I was searching for. I don't fully understand why it should cost $73,000, especially understanding that there are so many other parks where there are concession stands. I mean, are we, I feel like we're building a really elaborate concession stand for $73,000 and bathrooms?
Well, it's a lot.
Bathrooms.
Restroom facilities, bathrooms.
So I would like for the manager who's not, who's coming back in now, to explain why the cost would be $73,000 for that particular project.
Thank you.
Question?
Explanation of costs for resolution F for the bathrooms and concession stand.
So the architect has, he provided a detailed quote, and it lays out the cost for each item in his quote. We thought it was appropriate and efficient for the town to use Gian Ficaro on this particular project again, since he is the architect that handled all the drainage issues, he dealt with our environmental LSRP, and we thought it was best that he handle this because he did the original drainage study, and it would be best to keep it as, you know, keep the continuity using a single person. But everything's laid out in his proposal, all of the costs.
Was Gian Ficaro the architect that did the drawings for the new, or the old police building?
No. No, sportsplex. He did the sportsplex in Hill T. Park.
I want to, I'm asking that question specifically because I was asked that question before.
Ayavino did the drawings for the police.
For the police station.
Thank you for the clarification.
Councilman Son?
Looking at how much Gian Ficaro, Gian Ficaro was paid about $150,000 approximately for the sportsplex, for a project that was about three and a half, four million dollars. I don't know if we're looking at a, with a $73,000 design project, if we are looking at a, how many hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars we're looking at for a bathroom facility. You certainly don't have the same level of complexity of drainage, elevation, I mean, complexities. I mean, if I recall the, and I hope we can use some of those funds, the handicapped accessible bathroom that was designed for the Bella Avenue Information Center was costing roughly $25,000. If we could put several of those in at Voty, and again, a changing room is pretty much an open space, a bare-bones kitchen for a concession facility, I just don't see that we can justify spending $73,000 for that kind of project, and this just bodes ill for the size of the prospective project of how much that will be once they come up with a design.
Deputy Mayor, sorry.
Yeah, I'm not supporting it, but for a different reason. I fully support this project and adding, I think we absolutely need to do the restrooms at the field. But recently, and I have, it's recent that I haven't had a chance to speak to my colleagues about this, I took a tour regarding the splash pads, and I believe, as I've said from day one, that the handicap accessible splash pads should be, for several reasons, and shouldn't be for several reasons, in certain, in certain parks, but it should absolutely be in close proximity to the handicap accessible playground. If we're having buses come to tour and stay and use our handicap accessible playground, it makes sense to also have the handicap accessible splash pad accessible to them and not have buses go into residential neighborhoods. So with that, I felt that if we're doing a project that's going to require drainage and water, et cetera, that we should do this together. So I would like to see us allocate funds, and I know that there's a ad hoc resident, a bunch of residents that have come together to try to raise money, and I commend them, but realistically, it's, the onus is on us to provide an amenity like this. I'd like to see them continue to drive the enthusiasm and energy and excitement about the splash pads, but I would like to see us do the one project together at the same time, or, you know, connecting it at the same time, so we don't drill and dig for sewer lines and for water lines and then have to re-drill, even though they're not even so close proximity to each other. So for that reason, I'm specifically not supporting F unless it's bundled with the splash pad.
If...
Well, it doesn't look like F has support, so what I'd like to do is maybe instruct the manager to go out to bid on it simultaneous to everything else that Deputy Mayor said, so it's not going to be supported anyways, let's utilize that time to get a second bid, and obviously, I think that can answer a lot of the questions while we look at the splash pad matter, which I'm obviously very in favor of, everything Deputy Mary Katz said on that matter. So I'll support that poll.
So it's, do we have to do anything on it? No, okay.
And...
Motion to table resolution F.
And have the manager, can we amend that, have the manager pull, request bids on that?
Roll call. Councilmember Castle?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Katz?
Yes, to table.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Son?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I make a motion that we have, no, no.
Bidding to propose a proposal. And then bids are actually soliciting repetitive bids on professional services contracts. Proposals are probably...
I'd like to get a proposal. An RFP, a proposal to match resolution F. Adding the splash. Well, I'm up to, I'm just, well... All right, right. Resolution F, adding the splash.
Yeah, now he's making a motion.
I was, two separate matters. The first matter is, I'd like to get a, if you want to talk about the splash pads, first, that's fine, I'm, but whatever we do while we're talking about splash, I'd like to get a competing bid on to Gian Ficaro's bid on the Voty Park restroom facilities.
Do we have to actually take action on that?
No, unless it's a council directive item, yeah.
Council directive, good, step ahead.
Okay, so...
I'm not sure what you want me to do. What do you want? I'm...
You want...
An RFP for additional, additional, an RFP for the professional services contract for the Voty Park restroom facilities.
To look at both the splash pad and the...
And the bathroom.
And the bathrooms together, and get a proposal for both.
Two proposals, right?
No, one, inclusive, for both.
If RFP goes out...
As the RFP goes out, but can we get two submissions of an RFP so that we don't just get one and say, hey, that's it?
I'm not really understanding. I want to send out one proposal.
I want to do, I'd like for us to do an RFP, but we want more than one submission.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely. Do you, do you understand?
So your goal is to build, our goal is to build a splash pad and to build a restroom facility, and to have the same architect bid on both of them. That's what we're talking about?
Yes. And please, please let them know that we don't want what's running from the bathroom to go into the splash pad like we want.
I mean, I think one of the, one of the issues, one of the issues for Voty Park...
But isn't the splash pad at a different park, Phelps Park?
Well, one of the issues for the splash pad in Voty Park is the placement of it. I don't know, I don't know that we have the space to put it near the inclusive playground.
I'm sure you, we can go through it, if we can talk offline if that's okay, we'll meet there.
Okay.
With council's permission, I'll meet with the manager at the Voty, and I'll show the area that Mr. Pearson and I identified as a potential.
I'd like to introduce ordinances.
One.
One, 2015. Three, 2015. Four, 2015. And six, 2015.
I'll second that.
Ordinance one, dash, 2015, and ordinance authorizing the private sale of a portion of Lot 14 and Block 1909 as shown on the tax map of the Township of TNEC pursuant to NJFA 48,12, dash, 13. Ordinance number three, dash, 2015, and ordinance amending Chapter 33 Development Regulations of the Code of the Township of TNEC, establishing the Retail Overlay Residential District, ROR, and the Retail Overlay Business District, ROB. Ordinance four, dash, 2015, and ordinance amending Sections 33, dash, three, and 33, dash, 27 of Chapter 3 Development Regulations of the Code of the Township of TNEC relating to signs and billboards and rezoning Block 6002, Lots 10 and 11 from R, dash, S zoning district to L, dash, I zoning district. Ordinance number six, dash, 2015, and ordinance amending Section 4, dash, four of Chapter 4 of the Code of the Township of TNEC respecting the hours of operation of licensed premises serving alcoholic beverages.
Councilmember Castle?
Yes.
Deputy Mary Katz?
Yes, with an abstention on two, oh, one, two, oh, one, five.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Son?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. If there's no other agenda items, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Oh. Look at you.
I did it.
Good job.
Okay, ball in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Off the record.
So table or...
Two.
Okay.
What else was taken?